We'll call to order this special joint meeting of the governing body in the city of Navasota and the Parks and Recreation Board here on the 27th day of March at 4:30 PM in council chambers.
Mayor, I'm gonna ask Mr. Moody, he is the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Board, if you'll call your board to order as well.
I'll have a gun.
That's all good.
And we'll dispense with item two and item three. Any best truths or remarks?
No, sir.
All right, this is, this is a workshop session, and so there will be no council action taken on any issues that are discussed in this session, but it's an opportunity for the council and the parks board to exchange, and so, just so that for time's sake, if you do want to get involved in the discussion, if you'll just raise your hand and we'll start the discussion. So, Mr. Weeks.
Mayor and council and board, as you know, the city's been searching for Parks and Recreation Manager. We were successful in finding a new employee, and that person started on the 13th, and so, we thought it was a good time to get the two boards together. We got a lot going on on the park side. We've got a jam-packed workshop here, and so hopefully you've had a chance to look through the items. Just kind of, kind of how it's gonna go is, in front of each, I think a couple places there, you've got a button with a little microphone there, so if you push, you hold that down when you talk, it will record you speaking. And so, since I know that we do have some new board members, if I could ask you to please introduce yourself to the council. Council might not know you, and you might know the council, but at least that way we can have the council know who you are at this time. And I'll start with Ethan. Your name.
Ethan Barcheck.
BJ Moody.
Barry Kilkert.
Brandy Tejada.
Rebecca Cole.
Thank you all. So, we got five of our seven board members here, so it's a great attendance here, so we got, like I said, a jam-packed workshop here. So, the first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna do the workshop item to introduce our new Parks and Recreation Manager, Ryan Hendricks. So, at this time, as you know, Parks and Rec has been restructured, so now Reyna reports directly to me as the city manager, and the Parks and Recreation Function reports directly to Reyna, which is our Economic and Development Director. Reyna?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Parks and Rec Board and City Council. I just wanted to come up and introduce our new employee, Ryan Hendricks, our Parks and Recreation Manager. Ryan began on March...
Everybody behind you can see it.
Ryan began on March 13th, and since he started with the city, he's hit the ground running, working really hard with the Assistant Public Works Director to get the pool up and running for this upcoming season, and also, we're interviewing lifeguards this week, so we've got a lot of exciting things going on, and some of the next steps we'll be working on, more of the programming. So, everybody, this is Ryan.
Hopefully, did y'all actually get to read his bio and everything? Okay, awesome. Thanks, Ryan. Appreciate it. We'll move on to the next, I'm mayor and board. The next item is a workshop item to discuss this evening at Navasota, accepting conveyance of 1.113407 acres, which is two tracks from the Navasota Kiwanis Club for use at a, as a city park. So, to kind of give you some history, the Kiwanis Club owns two parcels of land over on Cleveland Street. If you're not familiar, it's just right off, right there at Brozig, and Cleveland is where the Boy Scout Hut is located, as well as there used to be a pavilion that was right there beside the creek. We, both of our pavilions have been a haven for crime. That pavilion over there, tremendously, we had to lock down the bathrooms. The homeless actually figured out a way to actually cut holes in the bottom of the pavilion, and they'd go in there. We'd find them with numbers type drugs and activity for that. I know that our Boy Scout Hut has been vandalized multiple times with graffiti, and so, we've been looking for a new location for the Boy Scout troop, and we've identified that to be at the Navasota Center. So, with that, there's not much use for this piece of parcel. Within the information that it provided to you, the land went back and forth between the city multiple years ago, and so, I've approached the Kiwanis Club and asked them if they'd, what they would like to do with that property. Their thought is, they would like to consider conveying it to us, and so that's a decision they have to. But I want to bring it to council and to the board for thoughts about what that location's gonna be. Of course, the Boy Scout Hut will need to come down. That'll free up some area. Right now, there is a basketball court. Wouldn't, I don't even remember if there's any nets on there. Sometimes it gets vandalized too, but there's just not much there. One of the things in the packet that I provided was the idea of at least at some point installing three playground pieces of equipment. As if you install three places, three pieces of playground equipment, it can be considered a drug-free zone. Drug-free zone means that you can't have drugs within a thousand feet of this. I guess it'd probably be from each corner there out. And Chief Myers is here, if you have any questions about what a drug-free zone can do for the city, but what it does is basically say if you're caught for this type of drug, whatever normally if you're out here on the street you get caught for, it's the next level up. It gets, it's increased requirements for that. So, the idea was, as we approach the budget year, is what do we, is there things that we could do? And so we wanted to put this item on, on the agenda to discuss if the Kiwanis Club is willing to convey that property to us. What are your thoughts on it?
Just a point about that, that park is kind of the, either the starting or the ending point of a trail system that actually starts right on the creek. There's a bridge there. A lot of people don't even know it's there, but it's a real, I think it can be created into a really neat area for walking and jogging and just a lot of, a picnic area and anything like that, as part of the trail that goes to Victoria, then it goes, you know, back here to the creek. So, it's, there was, there was some rhyme and reason to it at one time, so.
I think, I think the trail comes over on the south side of the creek, and right below where that comfort station or whatever was it, it crosses over on some stepping stones and goes up, and that's all part of the park. Goes up and then goes back across on that bridge, and goes all the way up and then goes up Victoria Park, all the way out there.
And I know the street that goes into Cleve, that tees into Cleveland is on our replacement, our street maintenance project list, so that small portion will be fixed. If you've driven it, it's very bumpy and a lot, a lot of potholes in that, that small section there, but it is in that area to be fixed.
I think it could be used as, the basketball courts just need to, probably just need some attention, I think, but I think the basketball courts would be used more if, of course, if they had some nets on there and maybe some lighting. But we've always had issues with, with lighting with the scouts, I know, because I've been involved with scouts for many years, and you'd have the vandalism that would knock out, shoot out the lights and whatnot. Yes, sir?
I mean, you say three pieces of playground equipment. Is there a monetary number that would qualify those pieces of equipment? I mean, does it have to be a certain amount per?
So...
The reason I ask is because I'm also the club coordinator for our Lions Club, and traditionally, we've donated to every single park in this town, if not built them. We budget for parks every year, so if we can get a number, we can probably help that along and make that a drug-free zone.
Right.
Fairly fast.
So, definitely, on, on the piece of a playground, it doesn't have to be much from the, you know, I call them the twirlers, the, just the, your normal stuff there. So, it doesn't have to be a full big playground, you know, a $15,000 piece. It can be small pieces, even a slide, a swing set, which I think it has somewhat swing there, but (laugh) well, I wouldn't probably get on it. But, so there, so there are some things that...
Did y'all do the one in Victoria Park?
We've done them all.
Okay, I thought so, yeah, because that one's...
Oh, the one in...
Well, and there's one at August Horse that's similar.
Also have been approached, it's been a while now since we've had a last meeting, but we've also been approached about pickleball, that, you know, I think we probably, once you get, the place gets cleaned up, that would probably be a better use than another basketball court. There's plenty of places to go play basketball.
We can talk about pickleball on the last piece, but, so we are working with the school district at a different location. I don't think it'll be, the best use, I don't think, is having a pickleball court at every park. I think we need to have them. And so, working with the school district, the school district's gonna be putting tournament pickleball at their tennis facility. That's one thing. The second thing is, they're looking at doing pickleball, at least four to probably eight courts over off Stacy Road across from the Little Rattlers location. So, that's, we're gonna be working with that. That's another discussion item. So, what I'm hearing from council... Yes, sir.
The basketball court has a problem on the side, furthest north, next to the creek. The basketball court about comes to the edge of the creek, and there's about an eight-foot drop-off on that, so even if you didn't have somebody falling in, you're losing the ball in there at least a couple times during the game. So, that, that needs to be fenced off or something, or repurposed for something else.
Yeah, put up a cyclone-type thing.
Okay.
And maybe you said this, and I just missed it, but the Boy Scout Hut is not part of the parcel that they're trying to...
No, so the Boy Scout Hut is on, on the parcel there.
Okay, so who would be responsible for whatever happens to that structure?
So, that's something we'll need, we'll be working out with the Boy Scouts in a future date.
Well, it may help tilt the way that I'm thinking about it, if we're having to pay for it to tear it down, and they're currently paying taxes on it, I would assume, for that building.
I'm pretty sure...
Because the building, I think it's tax-exempt.
It's tax-exempt.
They're nonprofit.
So, the property's owned by the Kiwanis Club, and the building is just on it, and like, we had our building on it, so it's, there is no...
The Kiwanis has always paid for the utilities. That's been the main expense.
And so, what is, what is the average cost of a park, just thinking about mowing and maintaining and lights and all that stuff per year? Do you have any idea?
I'd have to ask Jose, I think he, Jose, this is on our mowing contract already, isn't it? We're already mowing it already. We're already maintaining it.
Okay, so there would be no real direct impact? Nice.
Has the idea that the Kiwanis using the, the building out there at August Horse, is that over with? I noticed they're meeting at Navasota Center, so...
Yes, so, just looking at the, the building out there, and what we're asking them to do is, you know, it's like putting, you know, lipstick on a pig, Band-Aid on a, something. It's just, it's not, I don't think it's the best use for that.
The buildings in...
I think, I think the agreement that we have now, there's, they only have like, I think, eight Boy Scouts that are attending now, and that fluctuates through as one graduates. If someone's gotta come up and take over that, and so, I think at the Navasota Center, it's not a lot of cost associated with it. In addition to that, we have first rider refusal for all of their Eagle Scout projects, so there's a lot of benches and picnic tables that we could use, that could be these type projects, as well as any coverings, any volunteerism. So, of course, they do their projects out at the Renaissance Festival, but that's, you know, two months out of the year, so there's opportunities for, for them to help out when we have a parade or event, any trash pickups, anything like that, for them to, and that's kind of the offset.
Plus, I think the location is better, it's easier to get to.
Oh, I was just curious, I mean, I kind of thought the building was, needed a lot of stuff to make it foreseeable.
But we will need to discuss about the, the one at, at August Horse at some point, because it, it's in bad shape.
So, let me change the subject. If they convey it to us and the city accepts it, is there a way to write in there that we would have, that we could sell the property if someone approached us? Sometimes when groups maybe give something to someone or convey it, they may say, "But this is just for your use," so I don't know that that term is, but that if 15 years from now, somebody says, "Hey, we really would like that property." That, we could be able to do that potentially?
Yes, it would be a park property, which means there'd be a special set of rules that would apply, apply to the sale of that. I mean, we could ensure that the deed to the city would be free and clear to the city, but because it would be used as a park, we'd still have to go through kind of some special requirements, but it could be done.
Okay.
Just so you can have options.
Yeah.
Just because it's a park today, may not be 20 years from now.
Well, that may be gone. The creek may take it over.
We've got the proposal for the Boy Scouts, but one of the deals, when we were talking about the pro shop, was that all of the scout groups, Girl Scouts and everything, were gonna use that too.
Right, and so that was...
Where does that leave the Girl Scouts?
So, my understanding is there's, there's not been any other discussion, because when we got down to the legal portion of it, one of the organizations had to be held accountable, and it had, and it had to be in one of their names. It couldn't be in multiple of their names, and it really doesn't need to be in the Kiwanis name, because the Kiwanis is only the sponsor of this Boy Scout troop. And so, that's where we, we ran into, someone's gotta have, be the agreement. And so, the agreement that we have, that we've, are working with Boy Scouts for the Navasota Center, is strictly with the Boy Scouts. It's not for the Kiwanis or anything. It is with the Boy Scouts. And so, with the condition of that building, with the multiple legal issues with the contract, we just didn't think it was the best use to move, well, the other organizations didn't think it was best to move forward with an agreement for the pro shop.
So, so the others are just staying where they are?
Whatever they're doing, they're doing.
Okay.
They have not approached us, they have not approached us about finding another location.
Something could probably be worked out, though.
Something could be worked out, but, but we've not, we've only had this one organization.
Because I did hear that the, there was a, I think it's an archery troop or something. Anyway, they're, they're in Hempstead now, and I think they're gonna move their base to be Navasota.
Okay. Okay.
I have another question.
It's a girl, it's a girl troop.
That's okay.
Chief, call volume, back whenever I was in high school, that was a great place to have, you know, big fights and stuff. Does that still happen with the, with the pavilion being gone? Do we see, I'm just curious what the neighbors of the area would think about turning it into a city park, and are they, would be excited about that, or would they be concerned?
Beady and maybe Burglary.
One of the people that lives there, a friend of my wife's, and she says that she's so glad that that pavilion is gone, because it was, there was just so much illegal activity that was going on back there. So, it's definitely improved.
Parks Board, any other comments?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
According to the Graham's County Tax Office, there's three years past due on property taxes for the Kiwanis Track. R24015.
Barry, there's something I'll have to check on then, for sure, but...
How much is it? Did it say?
CAD shows $1,783.81 as of today.
Total?
Okay. All right, that's something we'll follow up on. Any other comments about the park itself? No, no heavy no's. Don't do this. Okay, thank you. Mayor, can we go on to number six then? Yes, sir. Number six is a workshop item discussed the creation of a new park on the property owned by St. Paul's Episcopal Church. So, back in 2000, in January of 2023, members of the St. Paul Episcopal Church approached staff about entering into a long-term lease agreement for this property. They're, they prefer for the, they want it to become a park, an open space park. They are not interested in anything going vertical. And so, with that, the thought is that the city would come in, help out with some of the sidewalks around that to make it accessible to the park, working with the, the garden clubs that we have here in town about doing some landscaping, some flower, some flowers and gardens, stuff like that. The other idea they talked about, they wanted a place where people could come and have lunch, or have dinner, and a picnic, or something like that. So, the thought is, this would be a great location for specific, for the Boy Scout troop to do an Eagle Scout project, to put together some picnic benches for that. And then, of course, the, the additional cost for the city would be for the mowing and trimming of the trees on that facility. We had, we didn't look at the, the cost of it. Again, adding a small location like that is, shouldn't be a, a large cost, but the reason we have this before you to ask it, if there's something you would like, is because there's a process that St. Paul's would have to do. Number one, the way St., the Episcopal Church is put together, it's owned by their...
Dais.
Dais, and so they have to go and get permission for this, and so, once they get permission, then they also would have to come to the city and go through the permitting process, which shouldn't be an issue, but again, there's some timing of it. And then, we would also need to be sure to budget for the mowing, as well as the sidewalks to the, to it. And again, the sidewalks are very minimum. One of the thoughts is, is at least trying to put something in there that would make it handicap accessible to the, to the location. So, that would be something we would look at as well. And that, the reason I say that is, there is a, there are steps that you have to get up, and so trying to do something like a ramp or something to get up there at it.
Are there any lights there?
So, there's, I don't think there's any...
I don't think there's any lights.
Any lights at all. Again, it's, some of the thoughts, we were talking, we talked about, you know, one of the, the parks things, programming was to do yoga. We do yoga at the Navasota Center. What about doing goat yoga here?
Yoga at the park would be better, yeah.
Yeah, so, doing, doing something like that at this location. So, Lupe included a, a description and a location of the map, with some photos there. Again, minimum stuff related to the trees, but there is the, the steps there, so that they were asking for it to be at least handicap accessible, or at least where the elderly could get to that location as well.
The configuration of the property is, we would need to replace the steps on the corner, and probably put in another set of steps going from the curb on up on McAlpin Street, and possibly another on Nolan Street.
So, the, the thought was to put some type of ramp over on the northeast side of the property, closest to the church.
Where it's flatter.
Where it's flatter, and also then, it would be useful for the church as well.
The original, part of the original plans, when they started looking at this and working on it, was to put in a prayer labyrinth. So, they liked the area to be kind of contemplative and meditative, or something where you could go there and just sit.
Is this the same type of situation, where they're donating that property to the city? Or is it, they still own it?
So, they would still own it. It would be, it, this, this is where they're actually just, we're entering to a long-term lease. So, it's similar to, I would have to, so over here...
Ketchum Street.
Yeah, Ketchum Park, because Ketchum Park is, is not owned by the city. We've entered into a long-term agreement with them, where since we don't own it, the, the LLC that owns the, the park, we pay the property taxes. That is our amount for the lease for the year. So, since there are no property tax there, it would just be into, you know, a dollar a year lease agreement, or something like that, for multi-years, as long as we keep it as this type of park. Again, some of the regulations they wanted, they wanted to, to make sure that anything that's put in the park, that's approved by the, the local church, they would like to have the naming rights of the church, which I actually put in here is what they're looking at, is the park at St. Paul's, and just have a little bit of oversight of it. Again, I think it's a, it's a, it's a committee there of the church, the ladies there at the church.
And I'm sure there's some master gardeners that would love to make it beautiful.
They are. I've already talked to them, and they're, they're very even, so...
That would be a great place for the garden club to show off their talents.
I like its proximity to City Hall and downtown.
Yeah, they, they, they...
It's not in a busy location. It's...
They liked it because right across here, you have the, the food truck park, and so someone could go to the food truck park, get some food, and walk just a little bit further and, and eat.
And it could be more suited for adults, and, you know, that might, like you said, by having activities on that property too.
Right. Any other? Yes, ma'am.
So, have they officially determined that they want it, like a dollar a year for the lease agreement?
They have not come up with a specific dollar. In fact, I don't think they even said that they would charge.
They don't want anything.
They don't want anything, but generally, you don't enter into agreement because...
You just gotta say something.
You have to say something for a long-term lease.
Yeah. They just, they just wanna make it available, because it's just not doing anything, just sitting there. Remember when we had the J.C. Hunter House in there one year, when there was a house there?
Yeah, there was a house there. Boarding house.
Any other feedback from the board? Yes, sir.
A good tree.
I would think with the amount of projects that we have going, that we'd maybe focus on those first, instead of building a, a park for a church.
Okay.
Yeah, I totally agree with you, BJ, and we have another, we have another park that has been requested to be put in, and we've gone through a lot of effort to, to start funding for that, and so, I would hate to, this is the Parks Board meeting, so I get that we're talking about all these different parks at other locations, but I think it would be important to note that we have other parks that need, you know, maybe need some help.
Okay. All right. But am I hearing a no for, for right now on the park?
Well, we can't make any decisions on that.
I, I know. I'm just...
I like the idea. I think it's great. I, what I don't wanna see is people start saying, "Oh, well, I have this lot, and I'm gonna donate to the city for a park, and I've got this one, and I wanna donate it for the city for a park." And, you know, I don't know where we are on parks for our city, but I think...
Well, we'll tell you...
We have a, we have a park in almost every quadrant, I think.
We've got a deficit in parks.
There's not one in that area.
Yeah, so...
There's not one downtown yet.
The whole downtown's a park.
We got this on a further agenda.
I think this is looking, this is more of a limited, you know, it's not, it's not, we're not looking for playground equipment or anything, so the, the expense is not gonna be that much.
But I completely agree. We have many projects to tackle before that becomes something a priority.
Okay. Well, what I'll do is, I'll look at some costs, and when we go through the budget process, we'll run it through the Parks Board, and then also, and then bring it to council, and see what the thoughts are with all the parks pieces.
And I don't want that to be taken wrong. I don't, I don't, I think it's a great idea. I just think we need to knock some things off the list before we even consider it.
Right, and I totally get that, Mr. Moody. The, my thought is, we, we've got a lot of parks that are deficit, and we need to get those parks up and going before we really focus on putting a lot of stuff in. I agree. All right, the next, are you okay to move on? The next item, I'm gonna ask Reyna to chair it to come up. So, this, the next item is related to our wayfinding signage project. So, back when I first came here, staff had already been looking at wayfinding ideas, and what do we need to do? And so, you understand what wayfinding is. Wayfinding are those signs that you see when you go right through the city, says, "Hey, City Hall's this way, the library's this way, the sports park is this way," and identifies certain areas. So, College Station, the city of College Station, the city of Bryan, and Texas A&amp;M University, they... and Texas A&amp;M University, they have all went together with their wayfinding as a group. So when you look at, you know you're in Bryan because it's a blue star. You know you're at A&amp;M, it is a maroon star. And you know you're at the City of College Station is a red star. And so we wanted to make sure that we looked at that. And then also, we recently completed our downtown study. One of the recommendations of our downtown consultant that came in and gave us recommendations is to look at the downtown area and try to pinpoint, what do you want to consider your downtown? A specific name. We had heard, you know, there was a couple of merchants that wanted, it's called a railroad district, but it was specifically the merchants that were on Railroad Street. So the idea was to make it cohesive and inclusive of everybody. And so we took our, what we considered our business district and labeled that the downtown railroad district. And so we've, I'll let Raina go through a lot of the pieces there. But this is a huge project that I'm very happy to be able to bring to council because we have met numerous times with the consultant to go back and do revisions and try to find the vision that we think that council and the public would see for our signage. Raina?
All right, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and Parks Board. Okay, all right, can you go to the next slide, please? All right, so just to give you all a little bit of background on the project, back in 2021, staff began doing a pretty intense research on wayfinding companies, discussing, meeting with other cities, looking around Texas to see what kind of type of wayfinding has been done really well and then trying to set up meetings, get some price estimates from those different cities. And so we kind of narrowed it down by early 2022 and made contact with a company for the wayfinding project just to try to get an idea of when it came to budget process for the fiscal year 22, '23. And then we went through the budget process and then met with this company again back in October at the TML conference. And we had a few meetings with them, or we had another meeting with them afterwards, wanted to get a contract going. And we followed up multiple times, never heard back. And so then in November '22, we made initial contact with a new company that also had a really good reputation and had been recommended from other cities as well. And so that's kind of what kicked off the design process of this project. So from November '22 to up until this point, we've been going back and forth with this company on getting revisions for the design and kind of getting the next step. So that's what brought us here to this meeting. And so we have it split into three different phases because for Phase One, during the budget process, we budgeted $250,000 in hotel motel occupancy funds for the wayfinding project this fiscal year. So as y'all see in the slide, the emphasis is on tourism and so the timeline is immediate. And so within this phase is the highway directional signs, so drawing people in along Highway 6 and along 105, bringing them in down into Navasota, into the city. Large double-sided park signs, so this includes some of our larger parks along the main roads here in town, so August Horse, the library, and the Navasota Center. So parks and city facilities. Downtown railroad district monument signs, since our downtown is a big tourism destination. Downtown parking signs, since that is a major concern. A visitor's center, digital illuminated downtown kiosk to be placed right at the visitor's center in downtown. The downtown street signs, like Jason had mentioned, clearly defining what our downtown district is. And then the Visit Navasota sign for the visitor's center. And so here is what the highway signs look like. And so just to give you all information, these are not, the information that's on the signs isn't accurate. We're just going through this process right now. The next step is going to include us getting with the team, determining the locations of where the signs are going to be placed so then we can go through and point which arrows, which city facilities we want to point out. But this is just to give you all an idea of what the design looks like. They're 10 feet tall, non-illuminated aluminum signs, and they're double-sided. So these will be at the major intersections along anywhere coming into town. And then this is the large double-sided park sign. So this would be the same sign for August Horse Park, the library, and the Navasota Center. And so it is lit up at night and it's eight feet tall. The downtown railroad district monument sign, so this one's five feet tall and located at the EDC parking lot, and it is double-sided. At the EDC parking lot, the.
And it's going to be illuminated too, so make sure you understand. The top photo shows you what it would look like at night.
Wait, which one is the EDC parking lot?
It's over there by the parking lot.
Next to you.
Oh, okay. I was like, wait, oh, is that big grassy area?
Yes.
Oh, good, because if not, I was gonna like put some art there or something.
That's a great spot, yeah.
Yeah, I like that sign too, I like that train.
And these are the downtown-specific parking lot signs. And they're six feet tall. And then this is the downtown visitor's center kiosk. So it's a three-sided, two of those faces are digital, and then it has the Visit Navasota logo on it. And then this one's also illuminated at night. And then here is that Visit Navasota logo that would be located inside of the Navasota Center, or not Navasota Center, the visitor's center.
That digital sign going back on the other page, is that something that y'all have the ability to check?
Yes.
Events that are happening?
Everything remote too.
Have a directory of the businesses and where they can find things and?
Yes, and the reason why we opted for the digital version is just to be able to update that frequently. And then if we have new businesses coming in and not having to go through and print it out and put something up there each time.
Yeah, I like that.
It's like less flyers maybe.
We'll still have flyers.
So does someone have the ability to maintain the sign if something goes wrong? Like electronically, like for the people that are installing it? Will they be able to work on it if the city can't? Like is there someone designated to do that?
Yes, we'll work with the company and our IT department.
All of these signs are fit within our sign ordinance.
Some of them will and some of them will ask for variance.
Because this one would, is this anything like what you would see at the Theater Alliance? Like that kind of electronic sign, flashy, or is it's?
No, you won't be able to read it from the road. You, this is made for you to walk, like you go to a mall and you want to know, I want to see the map to the mall.
You are here.
And you go up to the.
Okay, okay. So it's just like acrylic with a light behind it or something?
Like a TV screen.
But it's going to be digital.
It's like a TV screen.
I got you, I got you.
It's, yeah, exactly.
It'll probably still be like a TV screen, yeah.
It's not, it's not the 600 LED or 6,000 LED. Whenever those things are called.
Not LED.
Interactive.
I don't know if it's interactive or not. Yeah, something we'll have to look into.
I must have missed a step someplace. I know that there was a movement to name it the railroad district. And then the downtown association came through and did their assessment and they said that that wasn't a good idea to have, we have such a small area, we shouldn't have separate districts within it.
Yes, and so when they had mentioned that, we had discussed about, since we have our central business district, which incorporates all of our downtown, renaming our central business district to be branded as the railroad district, so.
Okay, well, that's a step that I missed.
Yeah, the whole downtown's a railroad district.
Okay.
Because it won't look really good to put the central business district on this.
Right.
We kind of want to, it kind of gets back to.
More of a cachet in the name.
Right, correct. It gets back to, if you, can you go over to the next?
Because all of our streetscapes are going to actually go to the next set of tracks, which will bring them actually to.
Nope, you went too far, one more. So, yeah, so this is the new design for the Visit Navasota. So this is something that the company designed for us?
This is the tourism logo.
This would be the tourism logo, specific for Navasota.
I have another, I don't know, observation. I think this is a great idea from 20 years ago when people actually looked up and looked at signs and used signs to get around. But nowadays, nobody does, nobody looks at signs. You go to.
I bet you differ. I went all over from here all the way to North Dakota and we stopped in I don't even know how many historic towns just to kind of shop around. And their wayfinding signs were what I brought home for Raina because I was so impressed with how easy it was to find things because they had these glorious signs that said, this is the historic district, this is the shopping district, this is where the food is, this is where the. And, because I don't always want to use my digital phone.
But so many people do. And it would almost be worthwhile putting the money into some kind of electronic wayfinding. Well, I'm sure.
These signs are for you.
Yeah, I'm the only one using them.
You have a flip phone.
I'm not worth just having it just for me or other people that are maybe older than me or something like that.
I would say that there is a very large shift in the amount of people that are putting their phones down.
But I see frustrating to me, I'll look at a, and I had in the newspaper and it'll be some new place that just opened up, come see us. And there's no address. Because they assume that everybody is going to look it up, poke in their phone and poke his number and then get directions with somebody telling them how to, where to turn and everything else. So I, it's not a critique or anything else. It's just an observation that how important is this type thing? I know in years past, it's been very helpful. But I'm just wondering how many people would use it.
Well, they must be, they must be using it quite often because before, hotel motel tax funds could not be used for these purchases. They have recently, in the last several legislations, now allow wayfinding to be included as part of that. So I think it's up and coming. Some cities have been doing it for a long time. I think what's been happening is you've seen more and more cities learning how to use it better and do the wayfinding better.
And then as a, as a, another option, I know that we're, aren't we updating our, the city app that we have?
Correct, so that's part of, that's part of the new website too. Again, trying to make everything that's going to flow with it.
That would give you an option if you wanted to, you know, like do a tour of homes or your tour of historic sites or things like that. You could look.
Yeah, I could see wanting to have the public safety things, you know, police station, hospital. You come running into town and need a hospital type thing. You look for signs, it would, in that case, would be very apparent. Not many people, but not, I don't know, you couldn't be all inclusive.
Something that can't be on a Google map is historic district or any of the, the other things that are listed here, you're not going to see it on a Google map. It's not going to show up.
I like the consistency of it because, you know, right now, the community center sign is a green highway sign. The hospital has a blue, little blue sign. Other things are just kind of, you know, willy-nilly. I just, I just like it, it all kind of brings it all together.
The community sign on Brosig is, I think, black.
Well, there's some that are brown as far as parks.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the park cover, I guess.
The state has certain colors.
The state has different things. So the hospital has the H, it's blue and white. So there will be some of that that will be out there. But the idea is to try to be cohesive throughout the entire city. So what you have before you here is using the same color code, the same thought process, the theme and fonts and everything so that you know, you know where things are. And making sure that you might have a stone sign out here and you might have a wood sign over here. The idea is to make it all consistent so that you, and again.
Well, it's, it's.
Quality of life is a huge draw here.
And it's branding too.
And we're trying to, correct, we're trying to do branding, we're trying to increase our quality of life. And this is just one of the pieces of the puzzle.
I like most of them. The only one, I do not like the one for Oakland Cemetery. That's, now, if it was something more like the downtown railroad district monument sign, I would say yes. I look at the cemetery as somewhat of a historic deal. This sign is very modern and to me, it, it looks out of place at Oakland Cemetery. We've got that beautiful brick deal that we put up when we opened up. I think if we highlighted something with that. We had the Eagle Project that was put up just a little bit farther in. This would not.
And so that is the purpose of this meeting?
Well, I understand, but that just doesn't.
I feel that that sign should probably be a little more solemn.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it shouldn't be.
Yeah, I mean.
It has an exclamation.
Like blinking lights.
All right, that's it.
Come here, stay here, die here.
Well, that was when we said that.
You're so close, so close to heaven.
It could be kind of like.
Yeah, welcome home.
I got you. All right, Raina, you want to go on to our next slide there?
And so then, I think this is the last one within that Phase One. Like I said, with this budget cycle and it being hotel motel funds, the big emphasis for Phase One is directional and bringing people here into town. And so then this is the, the street signs in the central business district just to allow people to know when they are within that historic district. And then. Phase Two is emphasis on inner-city directional. So this includes city directional signage, downtown directional signage, disc golf signs at the August Horse Park and then Cedar Creek slash Manslipscum Park digital aluminum downtown kiosk. So these are the inner-city directional signs. And these are very similar to the ones that will be on the freeway directing people in, but these are more for us, for residents and tourists to get around town if they're looking for things that might not be along the major streets like directions to the Navasota Center, the fire station, city facilities and of that sort. And then the downtown directional signage, this falls into the same theme as the downtown signs, similar to the highway signs, but it just has that similar downtown feel. And then here are the disc golf signs. So 18 signs, one per disc golf hole. We do understand that that map needs to be updated, but this is just to give an idea of what the signs look like, the rules, and then also the mounted map sign. And then again, here's the downtown directional kiosk. And so this would be going at Cedar Creek, Manslipscum Park. And then Phase Three, fiscal year 24, '25, emphasis on placemaking. So these are the smaller park monument signs, large, single-sided park signs, citywide parking signs excluding downtown. And then the second downtown railroad district monument sign. And so here's an idea of what those park signs would look like. These are double-sided. The large, single-sided park signs, which we have note to make a change to that one, but it will include some of the other larger parks as well. Here's the citywide public parking signs. So some of the ideas on this were at like the public library and other public lots that we have throughout town that aren't located in the downtown district. And then again, here's the railroad district monument sign. Location to be determined, somewhere on West Washington Avenue, connecting all of downtown together. And so do y'all have any other questions or comments on the signs, the designs, the next steps or any of that sort, timeline?
I'm kind of, I just have a comment and you can tell me whether or not our marketing team that put this together thinks it's a great idea. But your Visit Navasota train engine is one design. And then we have the Navasota so much so close sign. And then you have a different, maybe I call it branding. And then on the historic railroad district, you have another kind of thing. And so how does all that tie together? It's just a lot of. And so how does all that tie together? Um, it's just a lot of different, uh, logos or a lot of different, I don't know, it just seems like too many. I mean, you just need to have one common that you use throughout your...
So, that's, that's the old tradition. Now...
Well, I don't know about old tradition, that's...
New marketing will tell you, so, uh, many other cities are going to, uh, the, the new thing is to go to, like EDC have its own, CDC have its own, City have its own, if you have another board, have its, Visitors Bureau, visit.
Yeah, I could see that on a website. I just, I don't see it if we have a sign that's out, there's, this isn't, I don't know, just does not very much consistency to me in my, my thoughts, so.
So, um, hi, Bobby Alrick, Marketing Communications Director. Um, so what the cities are moving to is having a placemaking brand, which has our Navasota so much so close logo. So, what we know for is that placemaking overarching brand. And then after that, we stem down through tourism, EDC, downtown historical, um, I think that's all we have, right? So, essentially, we would thumb down from that, but what people know us for is the placemaking. So, when they think of us, it's the so much so close, um, branding, but when you start like itemizing down through what we're targeting, they'll have separate logos.
So, I, I kinda get that, maybe, I don't know. I, I just, it seems like a lot to put in your placement. I just want you to think of Navasota, don't you think of just great fun, blah. I mean, you know, this, this is your, this is what you're looking at. Just because we're small and if we were, you know, over ten square miles or fifteen square miles, maybe that would be different, but it's hard for me.
So, the city...
It will all be different downtown.
So, the city brand, so the city is being recognized now for the so much so close logo. We've like moved away from the seal, we're moving towards the so much so close logo that y'all have, you know, branded, tried branding for, but we're trying to brand further on that now. Um, and really like hook on to the tagline, so much so close. So, that's what I've been trying to push for since I began, cause I, that wasn't really being done before.
Right.
Um, so now the city, like as us, the people who work here, who are representing the city are now being recognized for that logo and moving away from the seal. But this brand isn't recognized in terms of trying to get people in here to visit. So, you know, and that's its own separate branding field. Um, a lot of cities develop a new logo for this because they attach the so much so close logo to city government, for example. Like when we go around and represent the city, or, you know, you're in your Navasota so much so close logo, you're a city official. They're not thinking of it as a fun place to go and visit, whereas when you look at the Navasota, visit Navasota logo, oh, okay, what a fun and exciting things to do here. There's a train in this logo, cool, let's look up the site, oh, wow. Let's look up all the restaurants here, let's look up all the things to do, the parks that I can visit, play at. Um, to try and separate and distinguish between, um, government official side and then purposely tourism side.
I got you. I just, the purpose of the so much so close was that that was our visiting brand back when Courtney was here. And that's what the city went with it, whether I like it or not, I don't know, but that's what it is. And so, I hear what you're saying, it just, I don't know, it's a, it, it may become too much for me. I'll just use my phone as burning suggest.
Um, did you have a comment as well?
A quick question, um, on maintenance. On the illuminated signs, will the vendor use off-the-shelf lighting or special order parts? I mean, any, you may have, uh, somebody run into the sign, it needs repair immediately.
So, you, are you talking about the, the illuminated signs?
Yes, sir.
So, um, again, I think the illuminated or, or, it's not, it's not like a, it's a, it's a light shining up through it is what it is. Uh, but again, we'll have insurance for, we have insurance for all of our stuff. Uh, right now, a lot of our signs are stone. That stone's hardly available, I think Jose would agree, and we actually have to get some, a masonry come and, uh, try to match it and put it together and it doesn't match. Uh, this is gonna be a lot easier for us to maintain. Um, there are, um, paint materials that they put on these signs that, um, allows us to, uh, wash off graffiti. Uh, so they, they, they become graffiti proof. Um, so that's one of the, the big things about moving to, uh, a new sign. Additionally, I mean, the signs, uh, the big signs, we're not gonna put them so close to the roadway where a car will run, run through it. But again, so for instance, the August Horse sign, it's a pretty big sign. You could set it further into the fall off that you don't have to worry about it, but it, it's, that, that's why it was lit up, so you could see it. Yes, sir.
I have one other thing, um, before all these. I get approached quite a bit, I'm a member of a bunch of different organizations. And usually in most towns you go to, there's a sign out front that has a spot for Kiwanis, for Lions, for Masons, for wherever. I get asked about that a lot. Is that anything that we could?
So, so that, that is a total different discussion we probably need to have. Generally, those are in your entryway signs. I don't remember exactly what our two look like, uh, for that, um, and, you know, I noticed that, you know, College Station, they actually adopted what we did and so that, they don't have them out there either. Uh, we'd have to look and see what some other cities are doing, some, um, some new ways to do it. But I totally understand what you're talking about, there's a lot of cities that do that. Uh, you know, right here, a good place might be, uh, right here, Intermedian, um, on, um, Washington where we had a car that ran over, uh, the flower, flower bed right there. So, it might be a good place that we might look at doing something with some rock or something in there and then putting the signs on, but, but that's a great idea. We'll, we'll add it to the list.
We also talked about doing it possibly on, on the entrance of ninety and one oh five because those don't have the monuments.
Okay, okay.
That, and that, that could be a, an option.
So, there'll be something, some things we can look at. Uh, one of the, you know, one of the locations we could maybe get with the school district about is, you know, right there at, um, in between the high school and the donut shop. That might be a good location for that because that property will never be developed, uh, by the school district, so that might be a place to look at.
The reason I ask, like I said, I get approached about it a lot, also meaning that it'll be one hundred percent funded by those organizations.
It's, it's a great idea.
So, it won't cost us anything.
Something we didn't consider, but we'll definitely add to it.
We get into problems with text dot because most of them are on the text dot right away. And this involves the churches, signs for the churches and, and, uh, a lot of benevolent organizations.
Oh, we'll definitely look at it in some, some, some way to try to do something.
Are the, the stone signs that are at some of the parks now gonna be replaced with these new ones or?
Okay, yes, sir.
So, we're gonna rip those out?
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Alright. Moving right along. Thank y'all, thank you, Raina.
Hey, Raina, great job. This is great information and I don't want you to think I was being all negative.
Oh, no.
I, I do have some positive in me as well.
Thank you.
I, I actually do have one more question because I've got another meeting to go to soon. On, on the disc golf course signs, if y'all can just let me know what you need, I know that we had spoken a little bit about it. I do have all the information if we need to do anything on that.
Okay.
Uh, I know that there was a, a lot of sponsors, you know, people buying the, the signs and then having the, the Lions Club logo on all of those. That was per the donation from the Lions Club. Just wanna make sure that's recorded, so going forward.
Okay. Alright, we'll move, Mayor, we'll move on to the next item, workshop on expansion of the concept of, uh, the Cedar Creek and Manslipscom Park. So, my understanding, it's actually two parks there. Um, if you remember back, um, this time last year, we were working on a grant to, we considered that area as the blotted area, cause there was pavilion that was, uh, located over there by that park. Uh, and so we, uh, were trying to get a grant to help open this project. Uh, we weren't able to successfully, um, um, apply for that grant. At that time, we, um, we applied was back in July, August, and right about then is when, um, Ms. PV left us and we needed to try to find another grant coordinator, so it was a federal grant. And the, these federal grants, as you know before, we actually have to, um, hire a grant management company to kinda oversee those, um, projects cause there's a lot of items that the federal government require that city staff is, is just, we don't have enough city staff to be able to handle that along with the expertise. And so, um, we talked about, uh, the blotted area, what can we do? Council agreed that we needed to, to bring down both of those pavilions and, and do away with the pavilions, so we did that. We allotted enough funds in there, so back in October, both pavilions came down. Uh, we've heard from a lot of the merchants, um, in downtown, hey, we need, we need more parking. Um, so, uh, the thought was, okay, well, let's look at this, uh, this place where the pavilion was to reconfigure that for some parking. Uh, and then we also heard from some merchants on that side, it's very dark over there, we need some lighting. Uh, and so, um, we, uh, went to T M L, um, some of our T M L classes, we talked about placemaking and trying to, um, to bring parks alive in the downtown area. Uh, in the meantime, uh, we also talked about cleaning the creek. We had clean the creek week, we went in there, we cleaned out the creek. Uh, I think in the past, uh, previous city manager and staff has brought to you some, some ideas about what that, um, creek could become. It could be a, a tourist destination as well as a quality of life, um, emphasis. And so staff, uh, met with, uh, K T L Engineering, uh, came up with some thought processes about what we could do, um, in phases to enhance that area, what I call the north side of, of the town, uh, downtown area between, um, the merchants um, and, um, Brookshire Brothers. And so we came up with, uh, some thoughts here on a, a, a multi-phase project on the screen you have. Um, the, the yellow, um, that you see there, that is a trail system. So, the trail system that runs, um, north and south comes right out of Blues Alley. So, the idea is you, you go through the crosswalk, um, you, um, go through the, uh, Blues Alley there, you go a little bit further down. Um, there is the trail system that goes right down toward the creek, um, around where, uh, just north of the, where the orange piece is. Um, I don't have the, the highlighter to show you, but there's a triangle. That is where the other kiosk, it would thought is, the other kiosk would go. Uh, then we would in, include trails, uh, enhance the trails that's already there, um, to the east um, as well as, um, you know, doing a trail to the west. The trail to the west, uh, would, um, meander along the creek channel there and then... Yeah, the, the creek channel here, um, if you'll, if you remember, right up here is the railroad.
And there's a bridge.
There is a bridge, there, the old bridge. Uh, so Union Pacific has some special, uh, grant funds, there are some other grant funds out there that, um, other cities have, um, made those old, um, railroad bridges into pedestrian bridges. And so, uh, Waukesha Hatchie has, is a prime example of that, where they took the old railroad bridge and turned it into a pedestrian bridge. So, the idea is to do a connection here to the pedestrian bridge here, uh, which we would have to get with Union Pacific about. And then at some point, we would wire, do another trail all the way around over here. Uh, there would probably be another pedestrian bridge here, uh, that would connect the green space area here to the pedestrian bridge that you get over here and walk. Uh, and as I was talking about parking, all of this is all, would be all new parking. I can't remember the total, um, parking spaces there, you'd have to look through the package there. How many?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven, uh, forty-seven new parking spaces here. Uh, and of course, we would always try to work with the other tenants that are in the area. So, if we could work with the Chinese restaurant here to, to help, uh, address this little area right here, that we'd add some more, uh, parking. Uh, we've done a lot of, uh, the cleanup down through here. Um, the idea is for one of the other phases would be, uh, adding a playground here. Um, and then also the option could be to also to add a splash pad here. The idea would be do some type of train-themed playground, um, and then on the splash pad, do some type of musical, um, um, splash pad, whether it's a saxophone that throws out water to the kids for splash pad, something like that, something that, that brings that blues connection, uh, back to, uh, the community. And then with that, we'd need to put at least a, I call it a one-holer restroom there, uh, uh, not generic, uh, or, or, um...
Female.
A male, female, doesn't matter, men's, ladies, uh, just at least one, something there for a restroom facility. So, that would be in multiple phases, cause we're talking about a lot of funds that would need to be, uh, done here. But again, um, items you have before you here is specific, uh, to what we call phase one is putting the...
Getting the park.
Getting the parking lot in, getting some lighting in, uh, getting, um, some of the trail stuff here done along with, uh, bench seating. Now, the last phase of the project crosses over, um, La Salle and then would go s- along Brulee here, all the way to Brozig. And that would include, um, a, a really nice, thick, um, wide, uh, walking trail, um, that's not leaning, uh, when you're walking.
Not backed out.
Yeah, it's just, it would just, it, 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 the jacksley, and then also have a couple places where it would have steps down into the creek. So, you could step down into the creek, uh, with maybe a pad there, so if you wanna fish or just sit there and enjoy the creek with some, um, some benches there, along with lighting, the other pieces, putting some, uh, some good lighting in there, the decorative lighting, um, all the way down, like I said, all the way to Brulee.
And then there is, there's our, another project that's actually gonna be starting up on Brozig.
Yeah, so Brozig, uh, Brozig Skywalk Project, we received and went over the sixty percent drawings, um, that will, you know, it goes, goes from the, uh, from the school all the way, uh, to Piedmont, uh, will include sidewalks on the west side. Uh, however, once you get to the creek on the east side, will include a sidewalk all the way over to, is that, what street's that, that?
Uh, across.
Yeah, it goes, it across, crossroad, but it goes back to the street back behind...
Austin.
Austin, that's, what, no, is it?
Uh, Julia.
Julia, go all the way back to Julia, and actually include, um, you know, really nice, um, um, it's, it's a pretty big, um, walkway down through there. Again, any, uh, uh, street cuts or, um, driveways that need to be done is also included in that project. So, it'll tie really good into, into that, um, that project. I know that, uh, so, I know we talked about not wanting to create a new park or anything. I don't, we don't, we don't really consider this as creating a new park, we are enhancing, uh, the park. Um, a- again, within the packet, there are multiple areas of opportunities for grants. And so the city would try to, um, secure as much grants as available to move forward with the project.
Um, when discussing this particular park, I would love it if we could make that a park for all. And if you need an example of that, the, um, the Central Park, um, Beachy Park at College Station has a park for all with a splash pad that is wheelchair accessible for children that have disabilities. We do not have anything in town like that.
Correct.
And with our population growing the way that it's going, we, we really do have a need for that.
That would be something we, we could definitely...
I'm just gonna chip in here, um, we've been working with, um, some vendors so far and we are working towards making sure that it's like an ADA compliant, um, facility. So, just putting that two cents in there.
Thank you.
Like to toss this out, what, what are the feelings about a splash pad? How much does it cost, how much does it cost to run it? I, I'm concerned about accessibility to it.
A lot cheaper than our swimming pool right now.
Well...
Just saying.
I, I was walking the creek the other day, I was thinking, um, if we put a splash pad or something like that in there, what would be the possibility of putting a pump from the creek with a filter that would feed the pad? Cause it's right there next to a water source that constantly runs. I'm just saying. Don't, don't squish my ideas, ma'am.
So, so...
D C U might have something to say about that.
So, we did, we did find out that the, so the splash pad cannot drain into the creek, so it has to go into this, it has to go into our, our sewer system.
The only concern that I have with the splash pad being right there, is you put a splash pad right next to that Brookshire Brothers parking lot, everybody's gonna park in the Brookshire Brothers parking lot.
So, um, that would be, you know, that's something that we're gonna need to work out with, with Brookshires, uh, and have some discussions. Uh, but you know, there are, there is, you know, that, that's the idea of having the additional parking here. Um, and then, um, like I said, right now, uh, I don't have a, can't shoulder, there's no one parking there now along that, that entire area. I don't know if you've seen how we went and cleaned it out, there's no, no parking at all.
I'm picturing.
I'm concerned. I'm concerned on the user side of it. The splash pad appeals to small children. And that's a downhill slope. It goes to a, uh, masonry wall. It then has a ten or twelve foot drop down into the creek. And, uh. It's not, not a place where I'd want my kids running, running loose on the thing. I, I don't know what the security is on those things, whether they have fences around them or not.
They do.
Uh, somebody suggested the old baby pool, which is down the hill from the swimming pool. In the, kind of in the center of that. There's a foundation there for it.
So has any of this been factored in as it relates to staffing of the overall upkeep and maintenance of all this? Like trash cans and everything else with the bathrooms, ensuring we have staff to make sure those are well kept?
At this time, no, we've not talked about that. Um, we, uh, we continually add staff where we need. Uh, we also make, uh, concessions for, uh, bringing in staff on weekends, uh, for, um, the downtown as well. So, um, uh, there, there is some part of downtown that's not utilized, uh, on Mondays and Tuesdays. And so there is flexibility to arrange our staff so that, uh, maybe you work, uh, Wednesday through Sunday or stuff like that. So there's, there's a lot of other opportunities there on the staffing side. Uh, on a maintenance side of it, a- again, um, there's, a brand new facility is not gonna require a lot of maintenance. However, you know, we will need to include in, um, uh, with the playground, you know, how often are we gonna need to replace it? How long, how often are we gonna have to do this and do that? But I will tell you, uh, a- a- a lot of the T M L events that we go to, we actually are able to go through the event hall and actually look at a lot of the new, uh, technology that's out there for playgrounds. Playgrounds are really put together really well now. It's not, it's no longer the, the metal pieces where it just rust over and, uh, can cut people and, and stuff like, it's made out of very tough, um, type of plastic material that will last a lot longer than what it has in the past.
Is a splash pad a supervised playground?
No, sir. Supervised by.
Enter at your own risk.
Yeah, it's supervised by, um, adults, by the parents. Correct. But again.
It's like that at every splash pad I've ever taken my child to.
That's not unusual at all.
Again, so, uh, th- these are just ideas, um, and so, you know, we wanna make sure that we have those discussions and, and, and throw it out there and see what your thoughts are. But, but I, we do, we will always consider maintenance part of it. We all talk about the replacement cost, uh, electrical cost and, and just maintaining the park itself. Okay. All right, real quick, I'll go over the, the last item here if you don't mind. I know we don't have much time here, but something that just wanted to talk about and have a discussion, uh, with, um, council. So wanted to talk about and discuss other, uh, parks and recreation program activities, uh, not limited to pickleball, the skate park, uh, soccer, swimming, et cetera. So, uh, we recently got with N I S D and, uh, N I S D allowed us to.
Jason.
They're looking for that page. There's not a cover sheet, but it is the item on the agenda. I seen some. I'm looking for their page.
Yeah, yeah.
They don't have a separate cover sheet.
Number nine, number nine is workshop item to discuss other parks and recreation programs. Uh, so, um, th- there's nothing to add to it, just to have a, a verbal conversation about it. Uh, the skate park, as I was mentioning, the school district, uh, provided us additional land. We've been able to go out there and put the fence up, so the skate park has been increased. So, you know, what is, what is the council and the, and the board's thoughts about, do you wanna increase the, uh, the skate park at some point? Do you wanna add maybe a B M X feature to it? What other, is there another feature you would like to consider there? So that's, that's a discussion. Uh, pickleball, as I mentioned before, uh, the school district is moving forward with, um, uh, putting in lines at their, their big tennis facility at the high school to host tournaments for pickleball. Um, and then what it would be, community pickleball would be, uh, working with the school district at, off Stacy Road, uh, to at least create four, at the beginning, four pickleball courts, um, with the, uh, probability of expanding that to eight pickleball courts. And, uh, working with them about either a parking lot, do we need a covering for, um, you know, for participants? Bleachers, uh, restroom facility, those type things. Uh, so that, that's with the pickleball, uh, uh, swimming. I, I, I put information within the packet. I'm not gonna, uh, rehash that. But staff's working very diligently to make sure that we're able to have, um, at, at least, um, the mud cats to have a swim season this year. We are still working with, um, our new Parks and Recreation Manager to figure out what is the public swims gonna look like? But there's a lot of opportunities to have that. And then myself and Raina will be meeting with the Parks Manager, come up with some other, um, you know, Parks and Rec programming, whether it's, um, uh, daddy-daughter dance or, or what, what it's gonna be in the Navasota Center. But this time, I'd love to hear some feedback from the board and from council on other ideas.
I would, um, I would say that when it comes to the skate park, that we should ask Mr. Moody for input on that. That was his baby project. He pushed that forward and got that brought into the city.
Thank you. Uh, there is funding set aside for that expansion. Uh, we were just kinda waiting on the, the fence to be built a- and that go. Um, and now, and now that we have a new Parks Manager and, and the, the, the donors feel that there's, those projects are gonna happen, those funds will be released back into, we can, if we gotta give it to the city now, fine, you know, however we gotta do it. But there's funds are set aside, so we do matching grants. Um, it's ready to go.
Okay. All right, then I'll have, I'll have, uh, our new Parks person and Raina get with you and y'all can start teaming up on that.
Thank you.
Any other feedback?
Cause I, I know you based, you, you probably already kinda have an idea of what to add to it, right?
Yes, sir. I've got with, uh, Grind Line Skate Parks. They do one of the, all the big ones around everywhere. Uh, we've already drawn up, um, a design for it. Uh, we've got, drawn up two or three different ones to actually take to. I'm fifty, but I still ride, but I wanna give it to these kids that are actually gonna use it day to day. I'm not gonna just, it's not a selfish thing. Uh, this was built in, in oh nine as a two-part project. And it's twenty twenty-three and I'm still, still with it, so it's not just about me. Um, but yes, um, we will have, we went and took aerial photos, um, with the drone, sent those off to Grind Line. Um, and we will have a proposal for, um, the obstacles in it, the cost, everything.
I like the pickleball idea because it's, it's becoming a real popular thing and, uh.
I had to Google it. I don't even know what it was.
My, my brother-in-law's a little bit too into it. I mean, he, he actually brought some paddles with him this weekend that I looked at and stuff, so. No, not Eric. Actually, it's my, my sister's husband. He's real, he's real, he's real big into it, um, but.
I know they got a big group of Baptist churches that play.
Yeah, they.
I don't even know what it was. I literally Googled it when y'all said pickleball. I was like, what? Pickle like that, Nick?
Four ideas. And we were approached about it by several different people, which I had to look it up to.
It's good that we got, you know, with, working with the school because that's gonna take care of a lot of the expense that, that would be involved and.
I think some of the things that we used to offer the daddy-daughter dance would, is good.
Yeah.
Uh, but what I would also ask that you do is not overwhelm the guy, uh, in his first couple of months here.
I was too late for that.
With too much.
Way too late for that.
Yeah, because we wanna keep him around for a little while, so.
But again, this, this is a great discussion to be able to start having as we move into our budget year. So the idea is, uh, what, what's gonna happen after this is we'll take some, we'll take the feedback we received. Uh, we'll program some of that into our, our budget discussions. But also, uh, Raina and, and Ryan will be getting with y'all with the Parks Board. They'll have a meeting somewhere between now and July to have some discussions about budget, about what, what things would you like to see us to include in the budget? What are some ideas? And so, um, and then I'll reach back out to y'all pretty soon here. So you can start giving us some ideas and, and have discussions with Ryan about that.
The last thing, the last thing I'd like to, to say, and I, I think that the folks that have stayed with this board for as long as we have, we'd like to at least see the projects that we started, get those finished first. I, I don't know if that sentiment goes with everyone else, but I, I think that's kinda the consensus of it.
Okay.
I noticed that the, um, the signage and everything for the, um, disc golf is on the second phase. What are the, what are the possibilities of having part of that completed?
We could do, uh, but so, so when you, when we talk about second phase, so second phase is October.
Yeah, it's not gonna be that long.
Yeah, you're not talking, because here's the thing, the company's already done all the design. All it is, is we want this amount of signs and they start, they do them right then. So it, and it, so it's not like a huge design piece they have to go through. But there will be for the, for the, uh, for the, uh, uh, the golf, disc golf, we're gonna need to get the, the actual, each hole with the, the actual map or the diagram on it. And so that's gonna take some time. So I'm thinking if we start now on working on that, by the time October comes around, we're ready to go.
Okay.
So, um, they can only do so many right at the beginning. And I think what, what we're, what we're really talking about is two, two, two years' worth of, uh, signed projects between now and October.
Okay, okay. So that, that's gonna move along a lot quicker than when I was anticipating.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I would, I would love to see that, so that maybe, um, after we get all that financed in, if that is something that the city of Navasota could, um, could host some of those larger tournaments.
Okay.
Cause, um, disc golf is pretty big too. That is something I did not have to Google.
They just had the Texas State Championship this weekend down in Houston. Four hundred and twenty players. Lot of numbers, but that's how many were in it. That's a lot of revenue coming into town. All your hotels full, everything else, so.
So, yeah, that would be fun.
Okay.
I'd kind of like some input on, on the programming side of things, like the things that we used to have at the Navasota Center. We had like art classes. We had, we've had lots of different things over the years. I'd, I'd really.
Libraries picked up a lot of them.
Yeah, they have.
That's true.
They're doing a lot.
I, I think that, that most of these projects are worthwhile and, and probably venture them. I, I, we're suffering from being way behind.
Bless you.
Uh, and it, but it's a big thing, uh, allocating the resources and prioritizing, and I hate that word. But to essentially figure out what we're gonna do first to use, make the best use of the money and maybe get the most things done, even though they might not be the thing we'd like to see first.
Okay. We were talking about the pool earlier. I know swimming lessons was something that was kind of a need around town too. I don't know if that's kind of in the works or not, but, um.
Gotta have teachers.
I know. It's just like lifeguards are tough to.
Yep.
Tough to get, but.
You know, while we're dreaming. Yeah. But I would agree. Let's, let's focus on getting some of those projects finished so that we can check them off and move along.
All right. Mayor, this time I don't have any more comments unless, uh, the board or council does.
But you mentioned soccer on here. That was, that was something that.
Yeah, so soccer is something, yes.
The city, the city staff really ran that and the community was very thankful that somebody did take, you know, take run of it because the association, they had no one that was willing to take it up and they had great involvement. And, uh, I don't see any reason why that shouldn't continue. But, uh, I guess the hope would be that an association would get reestablished at some point, but if not, we'll.
Yeah, so, so we, we've already had discussions about that, of what are the next steps, you know, we've received a lot of feedback from the survey we did. There was a lot of interest in doing it, not only in the fall, but also in the spring. Uh, but they also, they wanted photo, team photos, a little bit better jerseys. Uh, and so those are things that, us knowing that we want, that we're the ones, the city's gonna be the one moving forward with the project and, and that programming, that we can plan ahead, where last year, we had about a month to plan.
Also make note that the city's also working close with Little League, um, and also trying to help them with some.
And so those are things that you will see come before you, probably during the budget season as well. Um, our, we do lack a lot on our, our baseball and softball fields. They're, they're, they're very lacking. So there's things that we're gonna need to start putting together. And, and that's the idea of working with Raina and Ryan about a pro, uh, something to come back with. I wouldn't say a Parks Master Plan, but it's gonna be something similar, a plan of how we're gonna move forward with these projects.
Sorry, I'm not keep bringing this up, but, uh, now that I can go back and report with, with good news, those Lions Club built those fields and we've been waiting to see if it, if it's time for us to kinda help out revamp them. We've just been waiting for today, so.
Yeah, we don't wanna forget that we have partners in the deal. And we have a new partner. The Ochs Club is in town and they, um, they do a lot for the kids too. So there's projects we can reach out with them about.
Yep.
I'm a new town member. Very excited.
Good deal.
I think V J's the liaison to all of those.
I.
He's on every single, he's in every single club. He really is.
I do.
It's amazing.
I love my town. And I'm gonna leave her at that.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Appreciate it. Mayor, you wanna adjourn us?
You're gonna close that one?
Anything else, I mean, you. Well, we will adjourn this workshop.